Good evening, Thousand Oaks residents and those watching at home. I'm David Maron, a member of the League of Women Voters. I'm your moderator tonight. We are proud to present the candidates for Thousand Oaks City Council, and we have all 10 of them with us tonight. We are going to do the program with very short opening statements. We'll take questions from our two reporters, and then your questions that you can pass in on the cards. This time, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the president of the League of Women Voters, Kathy Morgan, and you could give her a round of applause if you wish.
Thank you, David, and thank you to everyone for being here, our candidates and our attendees and our reporters. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 after the passage of the 19th Amendment, which granted the women the right to vote. It was founded with the intention of informing women, this whole new group of voters, how to go about getting registered, how to get the information they need to be an informed voter. We are a nonpartisan organization. We do not support or oppose any political party or candidate. We are a grassroots organization in that we're all volunteers. Our mission is empowering voters and defending democracy, and we attempt to do that by registering voters, by providing information to the voters about the issues in the candidates, such as holding this candidate forum tonight, and by supporting free and transparent elections. The candidate forums are an opportunity for voters to hear from the various candidates to get the information you need to make an informed choice when you go to the polls. We are glad that you are here tonight to hear from our candidates, and we hope you do get that information that you need. Tonight, we are very pleased to be partnering with Ventura County Star for this event. We thank them for their collaboration in presenting this forum and for getting the news out to help voters make their choices. At this time, I would like to introduce Stacy Galang, the news director for the Ventura County Star, who will make a few remarks. Thank you very much.
Stacy?
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Dave, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for having us here with you tonight as co-sponsors. We're so pleased to be here, and we're proud and humbled to be a part of this process. The Ventura County Star is a little younger than the League of Women Voters. We started in June 1925, and we are hoping to reach in. We're anticipating our 100th anniversary coming up here soon, so thank you so much for your help in being here. Thanks to the League again. Thanks to the city of Thousand Oaks for offering this venue, and thanks to the candidates for participating tonight. We really appreciate your presence here. You help inform the voters of your views on the issues. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. I'd like to also introduce our reporters here tonight. I'm going to start with our veteran East County reporter, Mike Harris. He's been with the Star since, I believe, 2010, but he was a freelancer for us, and he's been covering issues in Southern California for quite some time. Fun fact, he covered the O.J. Simpson trial. There you go. We also have Don Megley. She's our brand-new watchdog investigative reporter, and we're pleased to have her with us tonight. She is not new to Ventura County. She grew up in Camarillo, and she's been covering the city of Thousand Oaks for quite some time, so we're pleased to have both of them here to ask questions of our candidates tonight. Thank you so much.
So, as a reminder, we want to hear your questions. We have volunteers with little index cards and pencils. Just raise your hand, a volunteer will come and pick it up from you, or give you a new card if you wish to ask another question. With that, we're going to begin our opening statements. We're only giving them 30 seconds in the beginning. They'll get longer later tonight. We randomly drew numbers, and that's how we assign the seating. Our first candidate is Ed Jones, and I remind you, please keep your eye on that timer right there in the first row, whenever you're ready, Ed.
Okay, here I go. My politics are simple. In the first place, I would preserve and protect our lovely city. In our formative period, we adopted plans and ordinances providing for a low-density community, protection of ridgelines and oak trees, undergrounding utilities, low monument signs, and structure setbacks on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and throughout the city. We did this all to protect our beautiful environment and its viewing. Now, I want to preserve these charming vistas by preventing Thousand Oaks Boulevard from becoming a canyon of high-rise apartments and other buildings.
Thank you, Ed. We're going to have to move on. Our next candidate is Anwiel Korsip.
Thank you. Thousand Oaks is a special place. I want to keep it that way. That's why I'm running for city council. It's as simple as that. My top priority is to preserve the character of the city. How to do that? Preserving open space, preserving our views, and preserving the atmosphere which we've built over the years. I won't let the city turn into the San Fernando Valley with overcrowding, with traffic congestion, with crime, with increased light.
Thank you, Anwiel. Our next candidate is Bob Engler.
Well, thank you. Thank you to the League and thank you to the Star for putting this on tonight. My name is Bob Engler. I'm serving as your mayor this year. I've been a 32-year resident of Thousand Oaks. This is where I raise my children. This is where I've made my life, and this is where I want to stay. I had the honor of being a firefighter for almost 30 years, and during that time, I found out how much public safety meant to the quality of life. I can promise you three things.
You won't be able to do it in zero seconds. Sorry, Bob.
Well, I'd be proud.
You will have more opportunities this evening. Our next candidate is David Newman.
I'm a 21-year resident, eight-year planning commissioner, and grateful resident of one of the most beautiful and safest communities in the country. I'm running because our local government should serve our community interests, not special interests. I do not accept donations from developers or lobbyists. My only interest is that of the voters. I'm David Newman, and I hope to earn your vote for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Kyle Rohrbach.
Good evening. I'm Kyle Rohrbach. I was raised here in Thousand Oaks. I'm a board member of the Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts, a 10-year advisor for our youth and government program. This is a community that matters a tremendous amount to me, and it's one I have a personal stake in as I raise my son here. I will bring leadership rooted in my professional experience as the producer of kids' show Reading Rainbow, now the head of a network that is focused on the future of this city and getting things done.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jeff Schwartz.
I'm Jeff Schwartz, and I'm not your usual politician. Just like the ad for Apple computers, I think different. I've studied economics and government for 32 years. I know of bold, innovative solutions to our problems that nobody else is talking about. All my ideas are online at jeffforto.com. Love and liberty will keep us together. I say empower the folks in Thousand Oaks. Jeff Schwartz, jeffforto.com.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Sharon McMahon.
Mikey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You okay?
Okay, Mikey Taylor.
Okay. My name's Mikey Taylor. I'm a lifelong resident. I married the girl next door literally. We've been married 12 years. We're raising our four children here. I'm a local business owner. I'm the founder and president of Commune Capital. I love our city. I loved growing up here. We're enjoying raising our children here, and we want to continue doing so. I'm running for Thousand Oaks City Council. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Our next candidate is now Sharon McMahon.
Yes, thank you all for being here. I moved here from the San Fernando Valley with my husband and my one-year-old in 1985. And as I moved here, I committed to doing public service. I've been volunteering for nonprofits and service organizations, and also for the city for the past 35 years. And when I am on the city council, I promise I am committed to being a service-oriented leader for the citizens of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Hala Maher.
Good evening. As someone with experience in psychiatric social work, senior disaster analyst, and an immigrant from an oppressed country, I know what it takes to be... I bring a lot of diversity to the table. I'm a mom to two boys and a wife to a fire battalion chief. We are blessed to raise our family in this community, but in the recent years, we have experienced a rise in homelessness, crime, and unfortunately...
Thank you, Hala. And we'll wrap up with our next candidate, Dan Tweed.
Cities are the engines of civilization, and right now, our civilization is in the midst of a human-caused mass extinction. I want to make Thousand Oaks, Thousand Earths, a model city for a planetary reblooming of flourishing abundance through Edenicity. We need to go not just to 100% Eden-like conditions, but 150% to counteract the overshoot, the planetary overshoot that we're in. We're using up four and a half times of our Earth's resources, and this can come to a stop right here and now.
Thank you, Dan. We're going to move on to our first questions, and those are going to come from the Star. Mike Harris is up first. Anwiel, you'll be up first on this question. Candidates, you have one minute, and if Mike wishes to follow up or clarify, you'll then have only 30 seconds. When you're ready, Mike.
So, one of the candidates touched on this already, but some Thousand Oaks residents feel that the city is becoming overdeveloped and turning into the next quote-unquote San Fernando Valley. Do you agree or disagree, and why or why not?
I agree, and that's one of the reasons why I'm running for city council. Why is it becoming San Fernando Valley, where there's increased density, there's increased heights that are being proposed in the general plan update that's coming up that will cause the canyonization that Ed Jones was talking about? There's an influx of development in the city, which will cause the San Fernando Valley-ization of our Thousand Oaks, and that's something that I'm not for, because with that comes overcrowding, comes traffic congestion, comes the deletion of our open spaces, the deletion of our views, and the deletion of the character of Thousand Oaks, and that's what I'm here to run against. I have 15 seconds, so...
Not anymore.
Keep going.
And I won't give it to Bob Engler, because I know he'll be able to take the full amount. Basically, and with that, so San Fernando Valley, you know, is not what Thousand Oaks is, and that's the whole issue. How do we keep the city the way that it is, keep the character, which is semi-rural and suburban? That's the key, and that's basically what I'll be shooting for.
David Newman is up next.
So, in my eight years on the planning commission and previously as a product reviewer, I heard a great number of salespeople tell me that a dog was a horse if I just squinted the right way. And so, when I hear, "Oh, no, we're not turning this place into the next San Fernando Valley," I'm somewhat skeptical, and I think a healthy amount of skepticism is merited for claims like that. At the same time, I want to recognize that we have a severely unmet housing need here, and we need to address that need. That's for the core citizens of our community, for our firefighters, our teachers, our medical technicians. We need to provide housing for them, but we need to do that in a way that doesn't fundamentally alter the beautiful character of our community. I believe we can do both. The idea that this is an either-or choice is a false one. We can find ways to provide, to meet the housing needs we have without turning this into the next urban mass.
Thank you. Going to have to stop you there. Sharon, you're up next. Do you need the question repeated?
I think I got it. Thank you. Basically, we are not the San Fernando Valley. We will not become the San Fernando Valley. We have over 15,000 acres of open space. We have the ring of open space. We have our beautiful parks, and we have a general plan update that will work to keep our businesses in the proper place, that will keep our single-family residents' neighborhoods intact, and that will protect our open space. This whole San Fernando Valley thing is a scare tactic, and it should not work. We can grow reasonably, and we have to grow in a smart way so that we support the businesses, we support the residents who need places to live. Our residents are hollering at us. We need housing. The state is mandating. We need housing, and we can do that in a balanced way without this scary thing of San Fernando Valley. That's just ridiculous. We can do this.
Thank you, Sharon. Have to stop you there. Mikey Taylor, same question to you.
Yeah, I think whether you grew up here or you moved here, we did so to enjoy a great quality of life. Thousand Oaks offers something very special, and I think when we hear things like we might lose what makes Thousand Oaks Thousand Oaks, we become concerned. The housing issue, I think, is actually just one component to why we're feeling the way we're feeling. We're seeing a water challenge right now. We're seeing a rise in homelessness. We're seeing a rise in crime, and as you see all this infrastructure and housing built, I think the big concern for a lot of us is, is that only going to increase these three issues that are really challenging our quality of life and ultimately the reason why a lot of us love living here? So, to answer the question, growth needs to be done very responsibly. Even in business, growing can put you out of business. So, having to address these three key issues and then growing in a way where we don't lose the characteristics that make Thousand Oaks us is going to be hard work, and I think it's something that we should be concerned about.
Thank you. Bob Engler.
Thank you, David. The...I have to agree with Sharon to some degree. We have...Thousand Oaks will never become the Valley. There's two sides of the Valley that I want to remind everybody that there is. There's the density you see in Warner Center. There's also the squalor you might see on Van Nuys Boulevard. Between those two extremes, I think we can, as Thousand Oaks, create a city that meets the needs for our employment, for the people who are coming to our city, our highly skilled and highly-paid biotech sector that is looking for housing without destroying our neighborhoods. A perfect case in point is our general plan, which sets aside 92% of the city. Rather than touch that, we're going to use some higher density along the transportation corridors. This is the way which Thousand Oaks will beat the future.
Thank you. Ed, same question. Ed, same question.
Are you calling on me? Yeah, I feel that we're in a really great position right now. I was on the council many years ago when we adopted the original general plan. Now, we need to modify it a little, and we have been in the process of doing that, to try to...one main goal is to create affordable housing. One of the plans that I like, especially because of the buying online has closed a lot of the shops in our shopping malls, is to take some of those large malls, say at Herb's and Arbalis, or the large one on Moore Park Road at Arbalis in the northwest section, and convert part of that to affordable housing. I think that would be ideal. I would prefer that it be condos for sale to give young married people, you know, a foothold to try to get into housing and have maybe a single family detached at some point in time, but at least that could provide housing, whether it's that or rental. And they would not need a car, because they could be right in a shopping center.
Thank you, Ed. Hala, same question to you.
Thank you. I know that the residents of Thousand Oaks really have a concern about Thousand Oaks becoming the next San Fernando Valley. I am pro-business. I'm pro-growth, pro-slow growth, and I believe that there's a responsibility in that growth so that when you are building, that there is sufficient parking for the residents and for the businesses. And I believe that growing Thousand Oaks Boulevard can bring a lot of economy and a benefit to Thousand Oaks, but if done responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back to you in the middle there, Jeff Schwartz. Same question.
So, with these housing issues, we have competing interests, and there are always trade-offs for any decision we're going to make. If we overdevelop the city, it could adversely affect the character of the city. If we underdevelop the city, or underdevelop the housing, new developments, we may not have enough affordable housing, and we may have problems with that. The vast majority of residents that I have spoken with support slow, controlled growth of this city, and if we're going to do that, I think we, the residents of this city, should have the most control over this, and it should not be going to special interests, which some people are making the accusation that some of these deals are going to special interests, and also, we should not be kowtowing to Sacramento with their regulations, which sometimes are unproductive and counterproductive. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up with you, Kyle, on this question.
Thank you. I spent two years in the Valley, in Sherman Oaks, and not only was it really hot, but we are not going to become the Valley, and there's a few reasons for that, and you've already heard a few of them. And I think it's really important, too, that while many residents have valid concerns about the character of Thousand Oaks, which is something that we all love and is the reason we are all here, we have to understand what the facts are about some of these issues. Open space, not only do we have that acreage, but it's protected acreage. Most of the city of Thousand Oaks has already been built out. So, when we're talking about key opportunities to create housing so that we can continue to welcome the next generation of residents into our city, it really is about the local control that our city council can provide, and that is something that I'm excited to jump into.
Thank you. We're going to go to a follow-up question from Mike. You'll have 30 seconds, candidates. Bob, you're up first. Mike?
So, growth includes attracting more businesses to town. Thousand Oaks is known for its biotech sector. What would you do specifically to attract more biotech firms to our city?
The biotech is an area that we are really expanding, hoping to make this to a star for our city. The best way to do that is to cut what red tape we can and encourage those businesses to open quickly and become part of our community.
Jeff?
I agree. Free markets bring the best of everything. This is what has built the United States as the greatest country in the world, is free-market economics. So, what we can do to attract businesses is get government out of the way. We need to streamline government, reduce excessive waste and red tape in government, counterproductive regulations. We need to respect property rights, and whatever we can do to see if we can reduce taxes.
Thank you. Anwiel, same question.
Yes, thank you. So, I am an attorney for one of those local biotechs, so I know the importance of promoting the biotech sector and making Thousand Oaks be the premier biotech and life sciences hub in the country. The way you do that is you attract startups, you deal with established companies that are already here, and you draw in large companies to this area. You give them the benefit of, let's say, the national security issue of manufacturing in the U.S. If Thousand Oaks could do that, that's a prime draw for some of these companies.
Hala, 30 seconds, when you're ready.
I think bringing biotech companies into Thousand Oaks can create a lot of jobs, and speaking to a lot of the residents in the community, a lot are concerned about their young adults going to college and leaving out of state and not staying here locally. And so, I think one of the gaps that we can fill is bringing in those companies that not only bring revenue to the city, but also create jobs to where young adults can stay and families can stay together and not leave out of city.
Thank you. Dan, same follow-up question to you.
Could I hear the question one more time?
Mike, can you give him the question again, please?
Growth includes attracting more businesses to Thousand Oaks. Thousand Oaks is known for its biotech sector. What would you do to attract more biotech companies to the city?
And I've got one minute on that?
30 seconds.
Well, I've been involved with the United States Transhumanist Party, who actually believes in longevity, escape velocity, which some people predict we will reach indefinite longevity by 2043 is one prediction we would never...but a big part of this is getting governments to treat aging as a disease, which has not been done yet. Aging is considered this inevitable process, and we would really have better biotech attractiveness if we got rid of cars. We need to be a car-free city, and that will attract the workers.
Thank you. David, same question.
I do three things, starting with what attracts biotech and other startups to our community in the first place, which is our beautiful combination of natural beauty, open space, first-rate schools and libraries, and a strong business environment. We can't destroy that, so we need to preserve that to keep bringing businesses here. Second, we need housing. I voted for multi-use projects at places like Jans Mall and the Oaks Mall.
Thank you. Kyle, same question.
Yeah, Anwiel used the right word, which is startup. Remember that Amgen once upon a time was a startup, and I know that because I am the son of one of the first few hundred employees there. We have to support these businesses when they are small businesses, so we need to create opportunity by supporting our business economy, by making sure that when people and business owners are looking to hire, that they have an affordable path to live here and bring their employees here. to live here and bring their employees here and create a welcoming environment for that opportunity.
Thank you. Mikey?
What drives business to want to be in a city is a city council that's willing to listen to the needs of that industry. When you're looking at Rancho Caneo is where our life science community is, we have a lot of dilapidated, old, rundown buildings. So having a city council that's going through and changing old code to transform these buildings into modern, high-tech research facilities is very encouraging and gets the word out for that set industry that Thousand Oaks is a place that's ready to listen to your needs as a business.
Thank you. Sharon?
Yes. One of the problems that we've had with attracting businesses is that they can't attract employees and they can't retain employees. The employees have no place to live. So what we need to do first and foremost is work on our affordable housing and our mid-range housing, because without it, the businesses cannot bring in their employees. And so that goes back to our general plan amendment.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up this question with Ed Jones.
Yeah, I think we're the most hospitable area in the country to biotech. Our city manager, Drew Powers, has put out the red carpet and invited them in. It's amazing how many companies have located here. A couple of things: we are currently working with Amgen to convert a building that actually was our city hall once that Amgen owns. We have given them the green light to go in our general plan from industrial to residential. And secondly, we have a large building that provides tech testing labs.
Thank you, Ed.
For all of the biotechs, so they could just test their product there.
Got to stop you there, Ed. So it's now my pleasure to introduce Dawn, who's going to take over and ask her question from the VC star. Oh, and you are up first, David Newman.
So last night, the TO City Council approved a resolution that will ultimately allow the city to build a village of 30 modular homes that will serve as an emergency homeless shelter known as a navigation center, built on a city lot, a city-owned lot near Target. It's in the Rancho Caneo industrial area, or near it, and it was chosen after efforts to find an existing building to convert failed. Do you agree with the location that the council chose for this? Why or why not?
I strongly support the council's decision, not only there, but on the facility where the city broke ground today, and also on another facility at the former Hillcrest Christian property at Herb's and Christian. I'm delighted that we're beginning to do something concrete about solving our homelessness problem. I also think, from talking with police and public health, and from talking with others in social services, that the only thing that will address this is exactly what we're doing, and that is housing and services. You cannot have one without the other. I'm glad we're doing it in all of these kinds of facilities. I think that's the right approach.
Thank you. Sharon, same question to you.
I will say that I am so proud of our city council, and I'm so proud of the city staff, because what they are doing is wonderful. We are addressing a housing need for different types of housing, the emergency housing, the long-term sustainable, affordable housing, and then the Hillcrest Christian School that David talked about. It is so refreshing to see a city that actually does something instead of just talk about it, and I'm very proud. Kudos to the city, kudos to the city staff, and I'm very much in favor of that.
Thank you. Mikey, same question.
So my little brother is homeless. He's been homeless for 12 years. He struggles with the mental illness and addiction. It's something my family and I have been educated on a lot, and it's been a painful path. What we've learned, and ultimately what brought this vision to myself, is I want to make homelessness rare and non-reoccurring. And to do so, you have to address the three different categories that lead towards homelessness. There's a small percentage that are in financial hard times. The majority struggle with mental illness, addiction, and a crossover of both. For the financially hardship, we have Many Mansions, which is a great organization. They're at max capacity. We need more support there. For the addicted, I think we need a pathway to subsidize housing that is given once we're back in the workforce, back to sobriety and living a purposeful life. Mental illness, I think housing has to come with counseling and actual treatment to the mental illness, because if we don't do those two things, homelessness will not become rare. It will just be homelessness or mental illness and addiction in home.
Thank you, Mike. Kyle?
I actually had the privilege of speaking at the city council meeting last night in favor of the navigation center. And I'll give you the 54-second version of that three-minute speech, which was that this project is practical, it is timely, and it is necessary. What I mean by practical is that...and they had a really cool flyer that I encourage everyone to check out. These are modular homes. They are efficient to build, they are one of the cheaper options, and yet still provide a home and a shelter. And in doing so, you always have to find a location. And Ms. Hardy said it best last night in her staff report, which is, in finding a location, which is extremely difficult to do in the city of Thousand Oaks, it's very difficult to find the perfect location. So what we did was we found the best one. And that really is key, I think, to solving the homelessness issue here in Thousand Oaks, which is we cannot wait for perfection. We have to start taking action now.
Thank you. Next up is Ed Jones.
Yeah, I completely agree, and I voted for the project last night. Do I have to occupy the whole minute?
Would you like to?
No, I...
If you're done, I'll move on.
I think it was a great plan, and I'm sorry that some of the Rancho Caneo people on the gated community felt that it was too close, but it's in an industrial area, and it seems to me that it's located the best place that it could be. Nothing would be perfect, but it's a half a mile away, and I, you know, I just liked the project a lot, so I voted for it.
Thank you. Hala, same question.
Thank you. So I have a little bit of a unique and different perspective on this take. I actually worked as a psychiatric social worker on Skid Row in Los Angeles, and I believe that Housing First Policy, or Project Home Key, is a disaster, and it does not work. You do not have to take my word for it, take a drive down to Los Angeles or San Francisco. I think ultimately what is really critical for this vulnerable population is to address the root of the problem. The root of the problem is mental illness and drug addiction. We need to be able to provide services that really targets the root of the problem, which is mental illness and addiction. In addition to that, we need to provide them with vocational skills so that they can get back into the society. We cannot put a blanket statement on this population and assume that we know what they need. We need to meet them where they're at, and we need individualized plan to...a wraparound plan for each individual homeless person.
Thank you. Jeff, same question. Ask her to hold your applause, please.
To my knowledge, I am the only candidate that has a comprehensive video playlist on this issue on my YouTube channel. In fact, I have comprehensive policy and issue playlists on all the major issues on my YouTube channel. So I suggest people, if they're interested, go on there and watch it for a few hours, because there are several important things to learn about. We need to think outside the box, because the strategy that the government has been using has not worked. Building housing, permanent housing for homeless people is not new. It's 85 years old. It started in the 1937, with the 1937 Housing Act. It continued in the '70s with Section 8 Housing. These housing projects have been disasters, and the cities that have spent the most money on the housing projects, like San Francisco and L.A., are the worst. In fact, they've been surpassed by another city now, in California. Sacramento has the worst homeless problem in the state.
Thank you. Dan, let's hear from you.
Yeah, I watched that meeting last night. I was very impressed with the diligence of the city staff. We really have an awesome staff here at Thousand Oaks. Should be very proud of them. I think our neighborhoods are not set up to become intentional communities that they should be. We need to have a mix of, you know, these mixed-use apartments with shops and businesses, and really about 150 people is the number that you can really form close bonds with in your lifetime. And oddly enough, that's about the number of people that lives on an average city block. So, you know, I'm not saying the people on your block are your favorite intentional community co-residents, but, you know, coined that phrase from the '60s, "love the one you're with," you know? So we could do things like, you know, have dinner on your front lawn twice a week, you know? Get some mixture going among your neighbors. Start a skillshare exchange. Have a tool lending exchange on your block. Every block should have a readiness captain, too.
Thank you. Unwill?
Yes, it's really sad to see these people suffer. And I'm really happy that the city is looking at this issue and taking a proactive view and trying to address it. I agree with Mikey. I think that there needs to be a holistic and compassionate approach to homelessness. And you need to deal with employment skills, you need to deal with mental health issues, and you need to deal with substance abuse issues. And that's key. I like the way that the Salvation Army does things, and they have a holistic and compassionate approach. And my approach would be empowerment, not enablement. So I think that's the key to dealing with the homelessness problem. It is a regional issue and a statewide issue. So you need to get the state involved, you need to get regional partners involved. It needs to be a public, private, and nonprofit collaboration that addresses these issues. And it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. So I take my hats off to the city for taking a proactive approach. Do it.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up with Bob.
Thank you. I was on the homeless committee for the city, and of course, I'm on the city council now. I agree wholeheartedly with the positioning of that location and the fact that we are doing something. Homelessness is not just a Thousand Oaks problem, it's not just a state problem, it's not just a Southern California problem, it's a nationwide problem. In Thousand Oaks, we've decided that to take no action is not the right course. So we've been doing several things now in the city. We've taken this permanent supportive housing location at the motel, converting it into 77 units of housing. We're looking at a transitional housing location that we're talking about here out in Newberry Park. We are also looking at a permanent affordable-for-sale housing for other folks. These are the steps that need to be taken if we're going to holistically take this problem on.
Thank you. We're going to go to Dawn for a follow-up question, and Kyle, you'll be up first on her follow-up.
Yeah, so as many of you mentioned, there are several projects underway meant to provide services to the local homeless population. Several have mentioned the Quality Inn, but if you add up the beds from the Navigation Center and Quality Inn, you're still not going to have enough beds for the city's homeless population. If elected, what will you do to bring more permanent supportive housing to the city?
And a reminder, you have 30 seconds.
It starts with active intention to make this a real priority. It has taken years to get us to a place where we have now this navigation center on the table. You know, the committee that Mayor Engler sits on is an ad hoc committee. That should be a permanent committee. We have to understand that when we look at the numbers and say there's probably about 250 people living on the streets in Thousand Oaks, that number is probably much higher, and we have to prioritize this for the issue that it is.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Dan.
What was the question again?
If elected, what would you do to bring more permanent supportive housing to the city?
Okay. Well, you know, in 2020, California relaxed the regulations that relate to what are called ADUs and junior ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units, they also have these granny flats. And I think the city could actually use its bulk purchasing power to create kind of a co-op, where people could get the materials and the tooling to build these things where they're appropriate, on existing lots. And, you know, we've got great students going to Cal Lutheran University that would probably love to live in an ADU in a nearby backyard. I think, you know, where I live is probably a possibility.
Thank you, Dan. Going to have to move on to Ed.
Yeah, affordable housing has to be funded by either some elymacenary charitable group or by government. The cost of land and building is just too high here. If you want to move to Kansas, you can easily find affordable housing. But we want to do it here. Because of the redevelopment funds that were used in the past, we have built a lot of low-income housing already in Thousand Oaks, and we're taking steps to expand that right now. And I believe that through the steps we did today...
Thank you, Ed. Jeff, same question.
The entities that are most successful, if you look at the last 100 or 150 years, this is not a new problem. The entities that are most successful are the voluntary sector, the faith-based or secular nonprofits like Rotary, Kiwanis Club, Lions Club, churches, synagogues, families, friends, neighbors. These are the people that are most successful in solving this. I suggest tax credits to everyone who donates to a local charity.
Thank you. And we'll go on next to Bob.
Thank you. The issue, I think, of going forward is a complicated one. What I've been recommending to everybody, that we need to look at this as a regional issue, not just a city of Thousand Oaks issue. There are other areas that we need to address, which include parts of the county, with our continuum of care, and other areas where people are more able to find housing.
Thank you. And we'll go on to Mikey.
I have self-interest in this one, because my brother's been homeless 12 years too long. So I want him back to living life that was intended for him. My focus is going to start with the impact side. How do we work with, which I agree with you, nonprofits and churches to build the pathway towards housing, which address the addiction, mental illness? I think that's the most complicated part to this. I tend to think the housing is a little bit easier to solve, not saying it's easy, but my energy is going to go towards building people back up to being...living a successful life in our society.
Thank you. Hala?
I would agree with Mikey and Jeff, to be honest. Again, my experience as a psychiatric social worker, I really believe that we have amazing resources in this county with behavioral health and nonprofits in the area. We have a lot of homeless shelters that are doing amazing work, such as Manny Mansions and Gabriel's House. We need to model those resources and stop throwing money at the problem, because that does not fix it. Get to the root of the problem, which is mental illness and drug addiction.
Thank you. David?
I agree with Kyle that it starts with intention. We can have to stop demonizing our homeless population and recognize that unusually, 3/4 of our homeless population is local. These are our neighbors. I think we have to support our local businesses to create conditions, to create more employment, to make more people be able to afford housing. And finally, I want to point out that that 77-bed facility is transitional, so it's not 77-only forever. People move through there, and they move into a better situation.
Unwill, let's hear from you.
Yes, thank you. Again, the city is not in the...doesn't have the expertise to deal with this issue. We need to rely on people that have been doing this for decades and decades, similar to the Salvation Army, some of the faith-based programs, and we need to work closely with those entities to try to address this issue and take a holistic approach. And it needs to also involve state and regional support. It can't just be a Thousand Oaks issue and a Thousand Oaks solution. We need to address this on a regional basis and a statewide basis.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up with Sharon.
Yes, it is a regional issue, and we need to work with our regional partners, with the county, with service sectors. We need to work with the state and go after more of those state grants with the federal government. It's not something that we can do by ourselves. We've made a great start, and I do agree that the mental health issue is a big part of it, and I would like to see more resources towards the mental health component of it.
Thank you. And we're going to begin with the next question. We'll start with Jeff, and now we're in the audience question phase. There will not be any follow-ups. Your candidates have one minute. Jeff, we're hearing about some of the policy things, but let's learn a little bit more about you philosophically. What is your vision for Thousand Oaks? Some would say that Thousand Oaks is becoming a wealthy enclave. Others would say, well, we really need to focus more on family-friendly. But what is your vision, and also, how will you implement it? One minute.
My vision is a free city. My vision is a city that's guided by the principles that guided our country for the last 230 years. Those principles are individual liberty and personal responsibility. Those principles are found in the Constitution of the United States, in the Bill of Rights, private property rights, freedom, happiness, pursuit of happiness. That's what I want to see for this city. I don't want to rule over this city. I want to empower our citizens to have more... I want to empower our citizens to have more control over their own lives, more control over their own money, less inflation, which is caused by excessive government spending. We can do it all. Check out my website for all the solutions I have, jeffforTo.com. Bold, innovative solutions.
Thank you. Ed, same question to you about your vision for the future of TO.
Well, you know, I was here at the outset of this city, and I was on the original general plan committee. And we had a vision for this whole valley before there was, were hardly any houses here. And, and we envisioned a valley in which we would have a lot of low-density lovely neighborhoods. And starting with this corridor that we're in tonight, that was to be commercial with two hubs, one in Westlake and one in where the Jans and Oaks Mall are. And then we fanned out with medium and then eventually low-density. And, and we have upgraded the general plan, and we have provided for all the things I mentioned in my opening statement, low-density, protection of ridgelines and oak trees, undergrounding of utilities, low monument signs and set back. People talk about San Fernando Valley. That's what you notice here. I've had people tell me that they feel like they're coming back to paradise after driving in, you know...
Thank you, Ed. Time's up. And next up is Kyle.
My vision for Thousand Oaks is deeply rooted in the experience that I had growing up here, right? It's one that appreciates and protects the open space that we have. It's one that recognizes that this continues to be one of the safest places to live in this country, and it was one that, when Amgen was a startup, was affordable for a family of four to move and live here. We know that this city and our area is now one of the most unaffordable places to live, objectively. So the vision is one, when I look at this city through the lens of my son's future, right? If he would like to come back and plant roots in a community in which he was raised, just like I did, the vision is rooted in his ability to literally afford that privilege. And if I'm being honest with all of you, I don't think that that is a reality that he can afford in this moment.
Thank you. Mikey?
That's a really good question, and I have a lot of crossover, actually, with Kyle. My vision is based on my experience living here, and I'm also experiencing something really awesome right now. My parents are still here, my wife's parents are still here, all of the siblings are here, we have like 12 grandkids. It is amazing. I want that for my kids. I want my kids to grow up here, I want my kids to, to raise their kids here, and I want them to enjoy the things that really blessed me growing up. I want my kids always be safe. I grew up not having to worry about locking the front door, my skateboards or bikes would be out front, they'd never be stolen. Our open space is amazing, we have a quality of life that is very rare. I want my kids to experience that. I want my kids to know the business owners from the places they shop at. I want them to be inspired to create and ultimately have the new generation do more than we were able to do. And I want Thousand Oaks to remain having the special quality of life that we have today.
Thank you. On will?
Maybe I'm simple, but if it ain't broke, don't fix it. That, that's my vision. The city is a beautiful place, special place, and, and we need to maintain the character that it has and keep it the way it is. What, what's the use of open space if you have views obstructing that open space? Let me put things in perspective. The Hollywood signs that you all see maybe when you're, in the iconic Hollywood sign with the white letters, those letters are 44 feet tall. According to the general plan update, some of the commercial and residential units could be up to 75 feet tall. That's two times as tall as those white Hollywood signs. Think about that. And, and then when we talk about it's not becoming San Fernando Valley, it is, and we need to be careful of that. Yes, affordable housing, so long as it's done responsibly, and there's ways to do that, and we'll talk about it hopefully later on today.
Thank you. Sharon, same question to you. What's your vision for the future of TO? How would you implement it?
My kids grew up in a beautiful, safe community. They had all the amenities of our great parks and recreation, they had terrific schools. I want that for my grandkids who are now being raised here. And my vision is to continue with the, the open space, with the safety, with a fiscally strong city government. And I want to see that we have affordable housing for everybody who wants to live here. I want to see a vibrant community, a vibrant downtown, and want to support our businesses, because when our businesses thrive, the city thrives. So we can do that if we work together and make this a beautiful place for all of us, our children and our grandchildren.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes, my, my vision really is one where Thousand Oaks includes and welcomes everyone. That we have, excuse me, that we have housing that will be available for all levels of income, that we have a vibrant city that has arts and, and theaters that are part of the city, that we have a business community that recognizes how important it is to be part of our community. How do we accomplish that? We accomplish that by encouraging people to be part of our community. I would encourage us all to be part of service groups that become members of our, of our, of our city. This is the way in which we will have a, a giving and inclusive city into the future.
Thank you. Dan?
One of my childhood heroes is Buckminster Fuller, the guy that invented the dome, but he used to say, we need to build a world that works for everyone, you know? He called it omni-advantaging. And there's really no advantage in being an island of wealth in a sea of misery, you know? We need to look at these as a comprehensive design science way. I think we need to not talk of just Thousand Oaks, but the watershed we're in, Keyagus Creek watershed. We need to do watershed-by-watershed permaculture, which is permanent agriculture. I want to see a city that's energy secure, food secure, communication secure. I actually have a plan for like every day of the week, we can kind of work on one of these, these things, you know? Tuesdays is Two Way Tuesday, Wednesday is like, where is it Wednesday G I S? You know, NASA developed the digital twin system in 2003, where you make a sensor-rich digital model of what you want to solve in the real world. Government should be doing things like this, and all the tools are on the table, we just have to pick them up.
Thank you. Holla?
I'm bringing a unique perspective again. I was born in Baghdad, Iraq, came here at the age of eight. I keep hearing the words of affordable housing. You know, my parents taught us the value of hard work and education, and we struggled, we worked hard, and I never worked where I lived. And not to say that that's not important, it is important, but what I do want to say is that hard work and grit is the backbone of America, and it's what makes this country great. I do want to see a thriving city. I would love to bring in more businesses, new entrepreneurs with fresh ideas. And again, this country is built on the foundation of immigrants, hard work, and you work hard, you can achieve the ultimate dream. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll wrap up with David.
Thank you. My, my vision of good governance is a government that addresses the needs we actually have, that all of us actually have. In the past eight years, Thousand Oaks has produced 614% of its needs for luxury housing and just 3% of its needs for affordable housing, for a family of four making more than $100,000 a year. So it's not that we never build anything, as some people falsely charge. It's that the score is 614 to 3, and our priorities are out of whack. That's the issue that I, I look to address here. No one, no one looks at Thousand Oaks and says, you know, that place has too little open space or too much luxury housing. I'm sorry, I got that completely backward, other way. It's, it's not those things. It's that we need to address the needs we actually have and get that 614 to 3 score more into balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mikey, you'll be up first on this next question. One of the things that many residents throughout the city and throughout the county were shocked about were the racial protests and banners hung over the bridge on the highway. This also gets into the issue about racism, diversity, equity, inclusion. Share with us, if you're elected, your position, what would you do to try and stop these protests, assuming you disagree with them? And what would you do as far as promoting diversity within the city?
That's a good question. Look, I grew up on MLK. I, I was taught that you judge somebody based on the character, not the content of their skin color. I think every example in which how we live our life should represent that, all the way up to our leaders, how we communicate with one another, creating opportunity, helping new entrepreneurs regardless of skin color, ideology, faith, et cetera. Equal opportunity, I think, goes a long way, and just being vocal that that is available, I think incentivizes more and helps with the, the height of racism that we're experiencing right now between each other, at least from, I guess, the tension you feel.
Thank you. Jeff, same question. What would you do to promote diversity and inclusion? What's, what would you do to try and stop those protests?
Well, I have a dream. It's Martin Luther King's dream of 1963, it's, and he spoke it very well. I agree with him. But these people who, who apparently were on the bridge, they were obviously ashamed of themselves. They wore masks to hide their identity. We don't even know who they are. They, they should be ashamed of themselves. In Skokie, Illinois, several decades ago, the American Civil Liberties Union allowed Nazis to march right in the town. Why? It's the First Amendment. We don't have to agree with them, but we have, we should support free speech, it's in our Bill of Rights. We don't, we, we can condemn them, we can shun these people, but we don't even know who they are, because they wore masks over their faces, they were ashamed of themselves. I say the best way to deal with these people is to ignore them. Don't write news stories about them.
Thank you. Bob, same question about promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion. What would you do about those protests?
Luckily, I was the, the mayor when this occurred. We forcefully push back on, on the fact that that type of thought and, and is not welcome in our town. And that's what we said straight out, is not welcome here. As far as diversity and, and inclusion within our community, we have taken steps at the city council to insist that our commissions and boards represent our, the diversity of our community. We are actively pursuing that, to make sure that we have all the voices that are part of our community as part of our city. By doing that, we'll be able to better respond, excuse me, better respond to these unfortunate occurrences.
Thank you. Sharon, same question?
Well, we do have to be very vocal about these hate groups. They are not welcome in any way, shape, or form. But there's another thing we need to do. There are voices that are not being heard or do not feel like they're being heard. There are community members, maybe lower income, maybe don't speak English, and we need their voices to be heard. We need them to feel included and respected and heard. And I, I would like to see an ad hoc committee where we include representatives of those groups, so that we can hear from them what we can be doing better to make their voices heard and get their needs addressed.
Thank you. Ed, same question?
Yeah. It's a difficult problem. It's the problem that any society has that wants to be a free society. In Federalist Number 10, James Madison talked about the fact, he called it factions, and there's no way really to get rid of them unless you want to get rid of liberty. He said that liberty is to factions as, you know, air is to human life. You can't really do away with it, so you cannot prevent it from ever coming. But I think we have a wonderful reputation here in the city of Thousand Oaks. We are very fair in our hiring practices. We, we encourage minorities to apply, and we give everybody equal treatment. We look at people as whole human beings. We don't look at them as this, or that, or something else. And we're all entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and our goal is to have that in our hiring and in our whole city.
Thank you. Dan, same question?
Well, it is a tricky question. You know, I like Norway's solution. They've actually eliminated the use of the word race from their entire legal canon, and they've simply replaced it with unfair discrimination. Now, there is a certain amount of, you know, tribal pride and affiliation that people naturally have, but, you know, also, one of the strengths of America is the amazing ethnic and genetic diversity. And if these people want to go off and form, you know, totally, you know, purebred colonies, they're just going to, you know, turn into dumber and dumber, you know, versions of, you know, bad examples of inbreeding, really. But I believe in, you know, free expression, and I also believe in highlighting, you know, who's out there in the community that has questionable ideas, and maybe get them some, you know, better support and educational systems. You know, let's, let's not go down the path of banning books like we're seeing in some parts of the country. We need to be a very strong First Amendment society, and we also be, need to be a freedom of association society.
Thank you. On will?
I, I agree. First Amendment rights, you want to bring, bring these people out and have them be out in the light, not under a rock. And just look at the audience here and look at the panel here, look at the diversity that we have, just in this room. So Thousand Oaks is not a racist place, it's, of course, hate groups are shunned and not welcome here, and I think the city has done a great job to have inclusion, to have belonging, to have diversity, and to promote that. However, if you try to tamp out these types of associations or speeches, then things could go wrong. And you won't know what people are saying what, and, and who's saying what, and what their positions are. So, so we need to be real careful about doing that, especially as a city. So that, that's how I would pose the answer.
Thank you. And Kyle?
So I will respectfully disagree with, with On Will in that the city has not done a good enough job on representing the people that actually live here. We have to take a stronger stance on making sure that this is a truly representative local government of the people that live within our city. What I mean by that is the city has taken steps to create an anti-hate resolution. That's great. That was a baby step. Now what? We held a roundtable months ago with no follow-up, no feedback, nothing with actionable steps that are going to be taken to address the people that live here and the, the real concerns that we have, right? We have a 20% Latino population in this city, and I bet if you look at across every city council, or all of our city councils, our boards, our advisory councils, our commissions, we do not have 20% representation from our Latino population, right? So we have to take action, and I would start by looking at having a staff member dedicated to this issue.
Thank you. David?
I agree with Kyle, and I want to broaden the definition of DEI here. It's not just race. If you're a parent of a child that has intellectual or, or, or physical disabilities, that's a DEI issue. You may have a senior parent who has special needs, that's an inclusion issue as well. Kyle mentioned our Latino population. I would favor two steps. I agree that we need a permanent DEI officer on staff, who is our city's point person on inclusion, but as well, I think we need a permanent DEI commission, just as we have a planning or traffic commission, that would bring actionable items to our city council to address this. This is important for our businesses to retain and to attract new business, because they don't want non-diverse places or political extremism of any kind. And it's important that our city government represent the needs of all of our residents. Thank you.
Holla?
Yeah, you know, I, I listen to everybody here and, and, you know, their perspectives. You know, we keep focusing on the things that divide us. Why do we do that? Why do we keep focusing on things that divide us? Why don't we think and come together on things that actually bring us together, to bring the community together? Because if we focus on things that divide us, that's what's going to continue to happen, is we're going to continue to be a divided community. We need to focus on things that bring us together, values, whatever those things are. Focus on those things, start in the middle. What can we all agree on? Let's come together and agree on that and have that be the start. In terms of stopping the rallies, that's a First Amendment issue. So then you're stumbling on the Constitution, the First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike just slipped me a $20 if I'd let him ask another question, so we're, we're going to go back to that. And first up is going to be Sharon.
So back in December, a divided city council approved a six-story apartment complex next to City Hall in a deal that will bring the city up to $15 million over four decades from billionaire developer Rick Caruso. Part of the deal is that the city will sell the Lake Shopping Center to Caruso for a mere $2 million. $2 million. None of the complex's units will be affordable. Mayor Engler here voted for the project. Councilman Jones here voted against it. The two of them can explain their reasoning. Would the rest of you had voted for or against the project? Why or why not?
Thank you for that question. The development deal with Caruso, what, about 20 years ago, was a terrible deal for the city. It was absolutely disastrous, and I believe that the city did the best they could to get out of that deal. It was not what we want necessarily, but I think that the six stories, they're pushed back against the freeway. They are under the height of the Civic Arts Plaza. They're not going to be as bad as we all worry that they'll be. And I think when you think about Dos Fiantos, when you think about the Oaks Mall, these were all controversial developments back in their day. This is the same thing. It's controversial. I think in retrospect, with what it is bringing to the city and getting out of that horrible deal that we were stuck with, it's going to end up being, in hindsight, a benefit to the city.
Thank you. Hala.
I mean, you know, there's a lot of controversy in the community about that project, and ultimately, it's, you know, set and done, and there's really not much that you can do.
Thank you. And we'll go to Dan.
Bring back Jungleland. No. I think it was, you know, the best of a bad deal. And, you know, one thing the city wants to do is eliminate the appearance of kind of, you know, insider dealing, which I'm afraid there was kind of a taint with this project. But it is up against the 101, so it's not that, you know, grossly out of place with the height and everything. So, you know, I'm mostly neutral on it, but at least some progress can be made. And, you know, it will provide some complimentary shops near the civic center where we're at. So I guess I'm kind of okay with it as it is.
Thank you. Ed.
Well, I would reiterate the reasons I used that night. It was already pointed out, there is no affordable housing in 165 units. These are going to be luxury apartments. That's what Mr. Caruso is famous for. We don't need that. And we certainly don't need that high a building. You might say, well, it's recessed 400 feet from the street, and that's right. And I don't believe that that is a problem as far as viewing, but it's a precedent. It's a bad precedent. Somebody is going to buy up now some of these little wooden buildings at this end of the west end of T O Boulevard and come to the city and say, you've already built, you know, this six, seven-story building. I want to do the same thing. We don't know what future councils are going to be like. They might be influenced by that. So I think it was a bad idea, and I think we should not have approved it for the reasons I mentioned. Traffic congestion, no affordable units, and a bad precedent.
Thank you. Anwiel.
I agree with Mr. Jones. I would be against it. I don't know all the facts, but I could sense that it's going to increase the traffic. It's going to increase the congestion in the area. It's going to have a great deal of change to the character of the area. And six stories high, remember those iconic Hollywood letter signs? Two times as tall, right there on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Talking about affordable housing, and I just want to jump on this. Look, the city needs to have tough negotiations with developers on affordable housing, okay? They're the ones that should be providing the affordable housing. How can you do that? Well, I'd look in the creative ways in addition to those tough negotiations. One way would be creating what's been done in other places called the Hometown Heroes Program, where you incentivize law enforcement, healthcare professionals, teachers, firefighters, veterans to live in the city. The other would be to increase the certain fees and Affordable Housing Trust that we currently have.
Thank you. Kyle.
I'll start by saying that the producer in me that spends, I've spent a lifetime in negotiation, definitely cringed at the original deal with Caruso, and here we are, right? So I think it's a fallacy that you have to accept something that is or is not, or you vote for or vote against. The question is really asking what I would have done had I been on city council at the time, and I would have advocated strongly and tried to build consensus with our council members to insist on some affordable units, right? The city has a tremendous amount of power and sway when we can build consensus and build majority. And I don't believe in the premise that you have to accept the project presented as the way that it is, even after a terrible deal. I will say that I am looking forward to the campus master plan, which is the redevelopment of this area right here, because I do think there is potential for an opportunity to increase our arts community right here tied to that project.
Bob.
Thank you. Yes. The core of a city is to be a good shepherd of its citizens and of the money that we're entrusted with. I can't, there's not enough time to go into how bad a deal it was back in 2004. It handicapped the city. It devalued the property, and we, as fiduciaries for you, the public, had to be able to look at this deal and put it to bed. What did we get out of that? We changed five acres of property that had no value to us, that was not producing a dime in taxes, and we now have a tax-paying facility there. We have what are called Quimby funds that are going to both the schools and to the parks. And on top of that, and I know we didn't get any dedicated affordable housing in there, but we did get $15 million to be able to help us afford affordable housing for the future.
Thank you. David.
I voted against this deal because it was a betrayal of a public trust. We took public land and we gave it away to an L.A. billionaire in exchange for $2 million now and $13 more million 39 years from now. As every first-year finance student learns, there's a thing called the present value of money. That $13 million isn't going to be worth $13 million in 39 years. It's going to be worth a lot less. So this was not a good deal. And I agree with others who have said that the deal 20 years ago was terrible. It was. But the notion that the solution to one bad deal is to do another bad deal doesn't add up. I agree with some of the comments of others saying that we could have gotten some affordable housing in return here. We didn't. We have zero affordable units here. And if we keep firehosing Thousand Oaks Boulevard with more and more luxury apartments, high-end apartments, we're not solving affordability in any way at all.
Thank you, David. And next up is Mikey.
Gosh, it's hard to go at the end when everybody's given their answers. When you're negotiating a deal, it's very important to get it right the first time. When Caruso came in on the first deal, you're talking about a professional negotiator. This guy is sophisticated. This guy knows what he's doing. Unfortunately, our city council at that time wasn't equipped to compete with him. It put ourselves in a very bad deal. Now to negotiate a new one, the city was coming in from a deficit. When you're negotiating, if anyone's been in business, it's a spot you do not want to be in. Unfortunately, I think we need to learn from the first mistake and make sure everyone on city council has the tools to negotiate with somebody like a Caruso. The other thing that's interesting, I haven't heard about a real estate project getting through in California without affordable housing in a long time. So that's interesting.
Thank you. We'll wrap up with Jeff.
We have an issue where a lot of citizens are questioning this deal and other deals. We have a sitting planning commission member who has said that we are approving deals that benefit special interests and not the people. We have some issues here. One of the issues is this is a slow, controlled growth city, which most of the residents want, but when you do that, you have the politicians in charge and the bureaucrats, and they sometimes have too much power. The question is, can we trust them with that power? So I suggest that when we make deals, we should, once a deal is in the beginning phase, we should open it to open and competitive bidding so that everybody gets a chance to bid on that project and that the people benefit and get profit from the deal.
Thank you. I want to remind the audience that when the election comes, when you get your ballots, you'll be voting for three for this office. Three people will be elected. Unfortunately, I don't have any more time to get a whole nother question in. We're going to move to closing statements in just a moment, but I do want to take a moment to share with the candidates some of these questions that I did not get a chance to answer. They obviously won't have enough time, but I think it's important for them to know what's on some of your minds. So the question about city infrastructure and building resiliency to deal with climate change, questions about what type of boards or commissions might you be interested in serving as a councilperson, they could serve on things like Transportation Commission, Trash Group, the Pollution Control District, questions about how you're organizing your campaign, who's supporting you, who's funding you, some questions like that. Social issues, questions about would you defend the Planned Parenthood Clinic here in Thousand Oaks and what social services you think are needed. And there's many more. Sorry, we couldn't get to all of them. With that, we're going to go ahead and begin our closing statements. We're going to do it in the reverse order that we did in the beginning. So Dan, you'll have 90 seconds when you're ready. Oh, I'm sorry, 60 seconds. Oh, I'll bet you felt good about that, but sorry, candidates. Only 60. Okay, whenever you're ready, Dan.
You know, I got into this public service thing when, in 2018, when I saw, you know, Donald Trump getting into politics, and I thought, wow, we are really in danger of losing the American experiment here if we don't get up and really become public service-minded. I'm kind of just an average guy. I'm not really raising money to do my campaign. I'm hoping to run on the strength of ideas. If I keep doubling my votes, as I have done so far, hopefully I'll get 6% this time. And if I double and double, I'll have 24,000 by 2026, and hopefully the ideas will be doubled to match, and you'll be impressed enough to give me your vote. But yeah, if you could just spare one of your votes, and I would love to get to that 6% vote doubling thing, and I can say, wow, three times, and I'm on this exponential track. And we really are on an exponential track with accelerating technology, and I'm afraid our governments are woefully equipped, they're ill-equipped, to match that acceleration. So thanks.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Hala Mahir.
Thank you. You know, I really appreciate my parents bringing us to this country. Came here when I was eight years old, and we really struggled as immigrants, and we were always one check away from losing everything. And so I have always worked hard for everything I've ever accomplished in my life. And my background in social work, working with the homeless on Skid Row, in addition to disaster planning, anywhere from pandemics, mass evacuations. One of the best plans I worked on that was so successful, it won a state award, was the Family Assistance Center Plan. So I have a lot of experience when it comes to disaster planning and response. I've responded to several presidentially declared disasters, and I look forward to making Thousand Oaks a better place, safer. And with the homeless population, I want to get to the root of the problem. I don't want to put a Band-Aid on it with housing-first policy. I want to address the root of the problem with addiction and mental illness. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Sharon McMahon.
Thank you all for coming and for listening, and thank you to my fellow candidates. It's been really great to get to know you all. My years of volunteering and service in the community have allowed me to hear what the community wants. With the organizations I've been involved in, the service organizations, and then 20 years of hearings on the Traffic Commission and six years now of hearings on the Planning Commission, I hear what the public wants. I hear what their concerns are. And moving into the city council role, I'll be able to implement some solutions to help with these concerns, and that's what I'm really looking forward to. I am endorsed by the Firefighters Association and the Sheriff's Association and the Chamber of Commerce and a lot of other people. I wish you would all go to my website, mcmansforthousandoaks.com, and you'll see the list of five former mayors.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. And next candidate, Mikey Taylor.
I've spent my whole life in the Caneo Valley. I've never left. My wife is the same. I'm really doing this because I was impacted so greatly by this community, and I want to preserve it for our kids and their kids and their kids. The three things that I'm concerned about, the water management, I want to work to become less dependent on the metro water district, homelessness, I want to go after the root cause and make it rare. I want this place to remain safe for our kids, and I want to control the real estate so that once this comes in, it doesn't expose these challenges and also change the characteristics of our city. I love this place. I don't ever want to leave. I want my kids to be here. This is why I'm running. I want to make Thousand Oaks special for generations to come. Thank you, everybody, for tonight.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jeff Schwartz.
I'm Jeff Schwartz for council. To learn which challenger is seriously interested in council, simply ask who shows up. Since the race started in June, I'm the challenger who's shown up the most hours, I believe, at council. I've attended virtually every council meeting from beginning to end. Plus, since June, I've delivered many public comments to council, I believe more than any of the other challengers. Some of the challengers have not even attended a single council meeting since June, nor have they delivered any public comments. So why aren't many challengers showing up? I've studied government and economics for more than 30 years. I'm the candidate with in-depth video analysis of all major issues and proposals on my YouTube channel. I'm in this race to win it. I'm Jeff Schwartz. Visit jeffforto.com. Empower the folks in Thousand Oaks. Love the folks in Thousand Oaks. Love and liberty will keep us together. Jeffforto.com.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Kyle Rohrbach.
Thank you. First, to the League of Women Voters and to the Ventura County Star for hosting this tonight. I have had the privilege of growing up in Thousand Oaks, of being afforded the opportunity to return, raise my son, and volunteer with our most impactful organizations. And now I have the privilege of bringing to the city a professional skill set that's been proven over 15 years. As a producer of Reading Rainbow, now as the head of a network, skills that by the nature of the job are rooted in people, fiduciary responsibility, and decision-making. Look, for all of us, this is one really long job interview, and for all of us, at the end of the day, we know that you want to know that those in the job are going to leave a transparent, fact-based governance who will ensure we foster a representative government who has the vision to guide Thousand Oaks for this generation and the next. And if that's what you're looking for, then my name is Kyle Rohrbach, and I'm running for Thousand Oaks City Council, and I'd love to have the privilege of earning one of your votes.
Thank you. Our next candidate, David Newman.
Thank you. This decision, this election is about who decides what's best for Thousand Oaks. I think you should be the one who makes that call, not special interests. I stand for strengthening our community by meeting the needs we actually have, not the ones that best serve developer profits or the demands of a few extremist politicians who want to impose their views on the rest of us. We're incredibly lucky to live in a beautiful and, very importantly, well-planned city. That didn't happen by accident. It takes competent and experienced people in government. It takes nurturing our local businesses and protecting our open space. And it takes a willingness to stand up for our residents, for all our residents. I'm David Newman, and I hope to earn your vote and be your advocate on the Thousand Oaks City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Bob Engler.
One of the nice things about being an incumbent is that you can judge me on my record. Four years ago, I came to you and said that I would work on making sure that we had a very safe city, that we would expand our open space, and that we would have a well-run government. What has been the result over the last four years? We have the number one safest city in all of California. We've added to our open space. Even coming out of COVID, our city now is rated at the highest rating of AA+. This is my record. I encourage you to look at the record because by doing so, you can see what you might get in the future. For me, we need to remain the top city in California. We need to address our homelessness with compassion and urgency. We need to contribute to our Ring of Green. We also need to continue to push for housing for all. I'm asking for your vote. Together, we can make this happen.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Anwiel Korshe.
Thank you. My wife, Mary, and I have happily called Thousand Oaks home for the past 11 years. I have no background in politics. I'm self-funding my campaign run. I simply want to give back to the community that's brought so much joy to my family. Now, it's a critical time for the city, seeing how the general plan is up for adoption next year, and that'll set the vision and the tone and the plan for the city for the next 25 years. That's why you need independent That's why you need independent, thoughtful, confident, and tough leadership to help preserve the character of the city, to help preserve the city's needs, and to fight for city's residents. I believe my background in civil engineering and my 20 years practicing law, eight of those years I was an Assistant U.S. Attorney with financial fraud cases. I believe that gives me special skills that'll enable me to fight and stand up for the city's residents and the city's interests, and I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate, Ed Jones.
You know, my life, my political life, has been coincidental with the city of Thousand Oaks. I came here in 1964, just as the city was incorporating. I was elected president of our Homeowners Association. We had about 20,000 people then, and then I was named to the Master Plan Committee. With the aid of professional planners, we developed a plan for this city. I think it was a great plan, and then I was elected to the council. And in the early days, we made developers donate land for open space, for schools, for parks, and look at the wonderful community that this created. And we had, at that time, a very vibrant, young community that was smaller, and we had a parade that everybody went to, and we had grand marshal candidates that we all backed, and we had a big ceremony out at Dover and Hendricks. That's gone, but we can still get that spirit back. And I'm campaigning to ask for your vote again to help finish the job.
Thank you. Time's up. So I've got a couple of things to say, but before that, how about a round of applause for these great candidates? I see some familiar faces who have attended our forums before, but I thought it was quite fun to have the two members of the Star for this one, and Kathleen at the other forum. How about a round of applause for Mike and Don? (laughter)
I didn't know that he had a suit.
Ed, I'm still going. Hold on, Ed. Hold on. Can we cut that man's mouth?
I wear it at least once a year.
Ed, hold on. I also want to say that it is so great to work with the staff here. You know about all the many jewels in Thousand Oaks, but one that you may not know about is the Forum Crew, the Share Theater Forum Crew. They're just great to work with. The equipment is great. They make us look so good. People like Carl, Sean, Matt, Jonathan, the others, just a great crew, and I'm really fortunate at the League to have such a good relationship with the city. Also want to mention that, yes. This was being recorded on T.O.TV. It'll also be available on the city's website and also on their YouTube channel. You can watch it there. Want to thank again the volunteers from AAUW, Diane Birchman, Betty Stapelford. From the League, we have Pat Butler, Pat Essick, Maddy Park, Kathy Morgan. Wayne was our timer extraordinaire. Cheryl Collard, Roger Essick. If you've been to any of my forums before, you know I like to end on time. It's exactly 9:30. So I'm David Marin. Thank you all for coming tonight.[1774.15][1774.15](applause)